All right, let me call toward the December twenty twenty one Southbury zoning commission meeting. The pledge allegiance to the flag. To a republic for which it stands. One nation, united in this world, where we can do justice for all. All right, we don't have a quorum tonight, so this is really. Nothing can be voted on, but I guess we can have a meeting. Some relevant presentation to us and ask questions and maybe it's getting something going. So. And thank you for coming tonight.
Well, thank you for inviting me.
Not the best time of the year to be out.
No, there was a lot of traffic and police activity going on.
Was there?
Yes. Um, well, it just, you know, I don't have a presentation, but um, it's an introduction, my name is Brian Miller. I'm a planning consultant, I now have my own firm, which I've had for about ten years. And I've been with, associated with other people, so now my associates are basically, I collaborate when I need to. I'm also at the point where I'm more soli- I take projects that kind of interest me, I've, I've, you know, reached that point in my life and career. And um, as a kind of a resume, I've been doing this about a li- a little over forty years. And I hate the sound of that, but that's, that's true. And um, the last thirty or so have been in Connecticut. Um, I was, worked for another consulting firm, which isn't around anymore. I worked in, based in Handen. I was a, the director of development services for the town of Berlin for about eight years. Um, then that encompassed uh, planning, zoning, zoning enforcement. Um, and building, uh, inspection and economic development. And um, since then, I've done a lot of my consulting practice, has been working with municipalities. So, um, to some extent throughout the state, but, but for some reason, it's, I'm very concentrated here. I was um, the consulting town planner for the town of Oxford for many years. Um, for about two years, I was kind of the uh, planning consultant in Waterbury and Woodbury, excuse me, between when they, you know. They, they had per- a permanent planner who left and then I was kind of like the planning consultant for a year or two. And then they decided I want to go back to uh, staff situation, Middlebury, I was doing it. Uh, Beacon Falls, so um, I've kind of cer- you know, sort of circled Southbury a bit. And uh, so I'm rather familiar with the area. And um, I also, in, 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 obviously, a lot of what I've done, I mean, I've done planning studies and things like that. But what, one of the things, particularly when I was uh, the, in Berlin, when I was actually the ta- the staff, in charge of the staff and the zoning enforcement, um, the real nitty gritty of the whole system, um, it was very evident. And, and in fact, even through, when I was the consulting town planner, I was doing that in Handen for a while too. Um, the whole, you know, the whole difference between the theory of zoning and the actual implementation and enforcement of zoning is, is, is night and day. And um, I think what I, I, well, I know, um, I, I'm, I think that zoning has, um, it, it needs to evolve right now in, in many ways. And um, one, one thing like, in fact, I'll, I'll go back to uh, the listserv this morning. I don't know if you were on it, but somebody on a pla- it's a group or a bunch of planners asked questions and respond to each other. And somebody wrote and said, um, how are you handling the increased medical services provided in pharmacies? And my response was, well, right now, I assume it's some, it's gonna continue to be considered an accessory use. And, but at some point, we need to kind of rethink the way we do these uses. Now, if you really think of like a pharmacy, I started kind of thinking about that, how much of a Walgreens or a CVS is actually a pharmacy? It's just that little area in the back, the rest of it sells some, you know, over the counter stuff, but, but, you know, reading cards and shampoo and a whole bunch of other stuff. So, we need to kind of rethink that, and, and I was also speaking with a colleague and I said, well, if, if you say that medical service can't be in a pharmacy, who would, maybe you would have shut down all the COVID testing and shots that came out of pharmacies. So, we need to kind of think a little broadly about, you know, what, how these uses come, come about. And, and there's many other things. One of the things that um, you know, a zoning needs to do is, you know, reflect the vision and plan of the community, which we've known that. But my, my theory and it also has to, um, basically, a good zoning regulation is guidance to the market forces. It doesn't, it shouldn't try to buck the market forces because that doesn't work. And, you know, and, and, and facilitate the type of development everybody wants. The, the problem is, is that uh, you write a zoning regulation and sometimes what you get isn't really what you wanted. And I've worked with that and, and there are ways that I've tried to do that, and I'm very cognizant of it. And I know here you've been using your uh, design districts. And that's, that's probably a pretty good way to do it now. Um, but I also think, you know, you have to respect the rights of the landowners and it has to be practical and enforceable. Uh, I mean, sometimes come, people come up with regulations that are just, you know, how do you enforce them? Um, practicality of actual construction and development doesn't work with them. Um, and, and also, I, I, um, I, I think when you're, when you're doing that, um, it, it again, we, we, we need to know what's, what's, what isn't a problem and what is gonna be a problem. And if, like a zoning, you go back to my initial pharmacy thing, you look at it and for the person who said, who was thinking about there's something wrong with it, my question is, what's wrong with it? And if it's something that's acceptable to the community and functioning and doesn't really create a problem, then zoning shouldn't be stopping it. So, you know, these are the type of things that I try to look at, I, I mean, everything is easier said than done. And when I, um, Jessica and I started talking about this, um, the, the approach was, was different, I think, than the conventional approach. Because the, the, um, you know, we used to like rewrite zoning after we did the plan update, but, you know, you're many cycles into that. Um, the plan, I look at your plan, you're probably not gonna change it all that much.
Yeah, in fact, that's not even what, this thing reflected in the budget, the plan's not gonna change.
Yeah, I mean, basically, I mean, of all the communities, um, you know, Southbury seems to be working pretty well, you, you have issues. But um, you know, I, 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 I'm not doing the plan update, but from what I see, I don't see any, you know, like problems that are really bubbling up. I think there's issues that you have to take care of, uh, on, on the growth of the community and, and the conservation of the community. But, um, that's already called for in the plan. So, you've been doing this for, I don't know, you said about twenty years, this is sort of formulating. And just like every other town, you know, something comes up to deal with the situation and it's stuck in. So, my goal here and, and was at this point, was to take all this and make sense of it. And to put it into a more user-friendly, um, type of, um, document. I, I did, I went through it, um, the past week or so. And I, I, it was sort of confusing to me trying to find where, where something should be. And it, it, again, it kind of morphed out and it grew and now maybe it's, it's sort of like taking the pieces and moving them around. Now, um, you know, Jessica asked me what's wrong with it, and frankly, I, I haven't gone through it, you know, when we're, when I'm asked to formally, I guess, uh, work with all of you, um, then, then I take the red pen out and I'll start going through it. But I think the, I, you know, my job isn't to tell you what to do. My job is to ask you what you want, how you, what you want done and I'll help you get it done. And that's always the way I've worked with, um, zoning. And so sometimes what comes out, what I, I deliver, isn't exactly what I think is, is, is good or the best way. But it's the way I, after I've advised the commission, that's the way that they want to do it. And I respect that because this is something that you all have to work on. So, it's also the input that I'm go- that I would be getting is, is really the critical part of it from the staff and from the commission though. I understand you have some new people, but you, but you're the ones that have been working with this. And, and I always find something interesting, um, you deal with falconry, and I'm gonna confess, I never have dealt with falconry in, in his zoning regulation. I'm, I'm thinking that you had a situation in the past, somebody was doing falconry and somebody wrote a regulation for it. And, you know, and now chickens, and chickens are a big thing now, so, and it is true, everybody's kind of copying the same one. And if that's, you know, that's an important, chickens aren't that important in every town, but every, but other, you know, towns have their own, um, zoning issues. So, if it's been debated and worked through and everybody's kind of happy with your falconry, uh, maybe the, maybe the person isn't even here anymore, I don't know. It might, it might be, um, it might be unnecessary. But, but it's also the way, I think the bottom line is that this world, our society, and consequently, the way commu- um, development occurs has changed rather radically in the past decade or so. And will continue to change. And um, another example i- is, is restaurants. All of a sudden, you know, we, I remember debating forever how we do, listening to the commission debate, how we do outdoor dining. Well, what if it detracts from the parking and it's too noisy and everything else? And then COVID happened and the governor said, eh, forget all about that, you know, you allow it. And the world ended, I guess, is, is sort of the, the consequence, and actually, people kind of enjoy it. So, you know, maybe the way we've kind of parsed it apart like that, maybe we overdid it on the regulatory part. And maybe we still are overdoing it. And, and frankly, and also one thing, talking about overdoing it, um, parking. Um, and I, I've said this to every commission, I've, I've been in this type of situation. Um, I, I grew up on Long Island and would go into New York City frequently. And I, they had trouble parking in New York City, even in the boroughs. I have to say, I ca- I can't recall more than a half a dozen times in the thirty years I've lived in Connecticut that I really had a problem parking. And if I did, it was, uh, you know, when I'd be going into New Haven or, or Hartford or something. The, you know, we don't need to, um, design, to ma- not design, to mandate that, um, our parking lots have to accommodate a retail use on the, um, Saturday before Christmas. On the, uh, you know, to, to, which basically comes to, you know, accommodate a couple of hours on a whole day. And I, yours are high, your requirements are high. And again, we, you know, it's something that maybe it's working here and maybe on, I think on your design districts, maybe it's giving you some latitude on it. But, I mean, that's one thing that jumps up at me. And, and if you talk about the businesses and, and the benefit to the town, parking lots are, they're certainly not the environmentalist friend. And the, and it, and the town doesn't get money off of, I mean, the tax on a parking lot is minimal. So, who's benefited by empty parking spaces? So, these are the type of issues that I, I, I look to go with, through with you. And there's more, and you know, I hope, I hope to have the opportunity to go through all these different little nuances. But I'll, I'm, I'm gonna try to pick it apart, um, and the question is, why are we doing this? And if nobody has a reason why there's a regulation in place, then it shouldn't be in place. I mean, it, every regulation should have a purpose. And uh, one of the things I, I enjoy being with consultants, I come in with fresh eyes. And, and I know when you've worked with regulations for years and years, you don't even think too much sometimes about why it's there and should we get rid of it? It's just, it's just there. So, again, that's, that's, that's what I hope to do, to work with you on. And my process was basically, it's, it's pretty simple. Um, I would, would work with, um, relevant staff. And, and also, I, I'd start with a meeting with this commission and, and asking you to start going through it and give, give, and you'd get a red pen and, and, and tell me what you think is wrong. And where you've had problems and issues, or you just think of, well, what the hell is this doing here, excuse me? Um, and, um, and bring that to me also. I'd like to get, you know, two heads are better than one and multiple perspectives on this is certainly very beneficial. But I don't see, this part of it, we're not looking to change a lot of substance, I think. I think you, you know, my understanding is that's been pretty satisfying. But the whole nitty gritty of it and, and it's also, I sent you the new, the East Haven ones. Now, East Haven is one that keeps growing. Every time it changes, it keeps growing. And it, it's like a three hundred, you know, I don't know how many pages it is now, because I don't think I sent you everything. But it's, it's a monstrosity. And uh, I don't think we need to do that, so, um, anyway, I'm happy to answer any questions and I hope to start working with all of you, I guess, after the first city year, if you decide to go that way.
Oh, I'm a firm, firm believer, less is better.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I'm not saying that we have too much in ours, but uh, I like to see it cut down a little bit, or cut it down and give rid of some of the regulations. Uh, and one of the reasons why we wanted to go out and get a consultant like yourself, right? Is hopefully you can bring to the, we know what we have here, we know what we've been working with over the years. Um, we find it cumbersome at times, uh, but I think another set of eyes like yours, seeing many other regulations. We're hopeful that you can put the piece together or fix ours to make it more streamlined.
Yeah.
Um, make it more, um, uh, easier for the public to follow. Let alone our zoning enforcement. Who has to enforce it?
Of course, yeah.
That's, that's the big issue.
What, what?
I've always been very critical in the past and, and uh, to the point where I say, I think, yeah, police, what good is it?
Well, that's exactly right, and, and, and you know, and this, I've, again, I'm, I've been doing, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, on in years and observing things. And, and the worst thing is if you have a regulation that's either ca- can't enforce or isn't enforced. Because what it does is it creates a, um, a lack of, 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 well, it cre- it, it, it creates sort of a softness in regulation that now, well, if this one's being, not being enforced, then why bother? And how do you draw that line? So, if it's not, if it's not gonna be enforced and, and you're not gonna have an army of enforcers, which I'm gonna assume you don't want, and you're not gonna do, then, then, you know, kind of don't sweat the small stuff, you know? My apologies, because also on the chicken stuff. I, I, I've, I laugh because, um, it, one of the things also, uh, as I'm sure you guys, I think, I think I remember reading about going through live keeping of livestock and pigs and cows and alpacas and things and things like that. And that's, that's a big issue, and I don't want to make light of that one because it's very important to many people. But, you know, you gotta laugh about the, you know, that one goat is the subject of all this zoning fighting. And hopefully you've decided where, you know, the proper place for goats and chickens, but, you know, if not, I guess we'll, we'll have to rethink that. I'm hoping you did, you have already done it because it takes such an, an ordinate amount of time. No, okay. All right, okay.
I think I have a lot of stuff. I, I, being,
It's, it's been mental.
Being Southbury's historically been a farming town, I do think that we ought to have something in there about, uh, uh, a specifically agricultural regulation and something on agritourism. But to tie this point, um, there is regulations for the keeping of chickens in, in, in the same, uh,
Right.
Or, kind of, a lot of complaints about that, so that's good.
Well, that's good. Yeah, and if,
Farm stands, on the other hand.
Well, that's a legitimate thing, I've come across that in, in all these communities, these nearby communities, and they've all been handled a little bit different. Um, are you, we used to start with, well, they're selling the produce stuff, you know, and it had half size, and I did that in Berlin. And there was a little place and they were selling bananas too amongst the fruit. And I, I, I grew up in the city, but I, I understand, you know, a lot about, um, rural Connecticut. I was pretty sure the bananas were locally grown. I, I didn't know that for sure, so was there a big harm with the guy throwing in a couple of bananas with his apples and pears or whatever? I didn't want to make a big issue about it, you know, a seasoned system selling bananas. Uh, but, but you see, that, that, you're laughing at that and it's funny, but that's the type of thing we have to be somewhat cognizant of. And, and so like farm stands, you know? I, I lived in Cheshire for twenty-five years and Cheshire has these great farm stores out along Route seventy going into Maryland. And that's where, you know, all the big farms are and, and people love them, you know? And talk about tourism. And one thing was shared back in the day when liquor sales weren't allowed, you know, during, uh, on Sundays, is that, that the farm stands were allowed to sell wine if it was produced on the site. So, if somebody really needed a shot on a Sunday, you could still buy wine at, at the farm stands. But, I mean, these are the type of things that you make a judgment on and, and sometimes, you know, you don't have to regulate every problem either. Sometimes a problem is just a problem, you know? It's not your job to fix every land use problem in the world, it's, you know, come up with reasonable regulations or, or neighborhood disputes or anything like that.
So, if, if the town hires you, hasn't happened yet, right?
Yep.
But are we on that path, sort of?
Yes.
All right, how would you go about, obviously, you did mention the first step would be to come in and sit before the full commission and get some feedback or some honest discussion back and forth.
Right.
And figure out how we want to go through this or how we want to proceed on this basis.
Right.
And then from there, you would take all that information and try to work with the code that we have right now, the regulation we have right now.
Yeah, I mean, I'm ba- I'm not,
We're not looking for a wholesale change.
No, no, I, and, and I don't, and frankly, the reason my bid wasn't higher is because I assumed it. I think a lot of stuff has to be moved around, so a lot of stuff has to be maybe just shoveled out. Contradictions need to be addressed. Um, stupid things have to be addressed. And maybe new things have to be done a little differently. But my assumption was, is that, you know, and, and it, going through this, I think the pieces of it are good. But together as a whole, it, it's not, it, it seems kind of cumbersome to me.
Yeah, that, that's always been an issue with myself and other commission members, it's very hard to go through and follow through on anything there. I, again, it's not really for us, it's really for the general public to agree.
Yeah, but if you're having trouble with it.
A lot of general public's gonna have trouble with it.
Yeah, I mean, that's,
We live with it a lot more than they do.
Right.
We're gonna make sure it's easy for them to understand and, uh, uh, then bring it down to the enforcement side, it's gotta be enforceable. And again, like you said, stupid things are stupid things, you, you can't enforce everything.
No, and just because something's a problem doesn't necessarily mean a zoning law is going, is the appropriate response to the problem. Well, I, 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 I could tell you a story, so I'm not gonna do that now. But, but how much hours I've, I've wasted in, in Berlin, listening to neighbors squabble and, and make zoning complaints. And, and, and what a horrible waste of time and effort it was. And rather than just say, you know, hey, you know, get lost, because you as a public employee can't really do that. So, I mean, but I think we need to be just very, you know, keep cognizant of all that as we review it. And this is the opportunity to kind of use that perspective.
What kind of timeframe do you want this whole process?
I, I said six months.
Six months.
Which would kind of be ideal because the P O C D is not getting adopted until, I'm thinking, next year this time. So, if it was six months, six months to complete. Yeah, and then, who knows, I doubt there will be a ton of pushback with public hearings and.
Well, it could be, I don't know, we just don't have the work hearing process to look at.
There could, certain sections, right, yeah.
But over the next six months, we do have to tackle many other issues, like marijuana.
Yeah, and, and, Yeah.
You know, and housing.
So, part of the, one of the positive things, one of the other positive things is that, um, Steve Byrne recommended Ryan, so, I mean, he was,
I'm sorry I didn't mention that, yeah, I, I've worked with Steve Byrne a lot, and his father had the privilege of working with Tom.
His father used to come to our, used to, we used to have him at every one of our meetings, so maybe ten, twelve years ago.
He did a lot of work around here, yeah, yeah.
He was here every meeting.
What a, what a, yeah, I, I, he was, um,
I'm reliable, I'm reliable.
He, he even, then, it came in with that aura and he drove the vintage Cadillac all over the place, you know?
Did he really?
Yeah, like a nineteen ninety or something.
So, I think they could probably work in concert on the marijuana regulation, throughout the, uh, but yeah, there are gonna be, this isn't the sole project, is what you're saying, but.
No, it's not, and, and one of the things that, um, we, my concept is to put this together so that, um, like, uh, other things could fit in well. Like, the marijuana stuff, that, you know, that could drag on and, and, but, but it shouldn't, you shouldn't have one thing hold back the rest of it. And so, you know, you add a section to, to the section about, uh, um, you know, districts and uses and you're up to K now, so then you want to do marijuana, it's, it's L or, or something like that. And it could easily be inserted in without kind of like, right, right now, if you insert something, you have to be careful you're not contradicting something someplace else. And, and, and nobody could look at that, and if somebody comes in, I want an amendment, and then staff has to go through, well, you know, if, where is it? Um, is it gonna be contradictory to something else? That's just a, a, you know, a real pain and, and you, it's inevitably some of it's missed, you know? So, that's the way I'm looking at it, sort of like build the, So that's the way I'm looking at it, sort of like build the tree and, you know, then we can hang other stuff on it or however, whatever metaphor you wanna use.
Sounds like a great way to look.
I like it.
So recently, I just heard on the radio, I know that this could be a potential problem here in South Jersey, housing. There was a town that got sued by a state, yeah, and they had to pay three hundred and fifty thousand dollars fine.
W- well, I was.
I I didn't understand the whole story, I was just.
I think it was a group home.
Yeah, it was a group home, yeah, and wha- which you which you really can't, you know, you just permit them. And 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 if you don't like it or not too bad, just forget about it, just permit it, you know, you don't.
Yeah.
And and I remember getting complaints on zoning on group homes. And and it was nice to s- say, you say, well, we can't do anything about it. Because you can't. Now, there's another situation, the affordable housing, I was involved in Woodbridge. And somebody came in with a zoning amendment. And they had bought a piece of property and it was also done by the Yale Law Students. They have some sort of housing advocacy group. And D Second Gate Connecticut and all those people. They bought a a ha- a house lot about two acres. And a single family zone, and they decided that they wanted to change the zoning basically to allow to not permit the number of units to be regulated on on any place in Woodbridge. So if you could fit, and then they were coming in, I think with six or eight units on the site. If you could design this the sanitary system and the water, um, you could do that all over Woodbridge. Obviously, that uh did not go well with a lot of people in Woodbridge, and there was a group that was opposing it, and I was working with that group. Um, saying, you know, it, I mean, it was just bad zoning, you know? And my point was is there's better ways to do affordable housing. But Woodbridge, I guess, had just, I guess, got everybody all, and it wa- it was a nice fat target, so. And so of course, Woodbridge was, the town was look looking for reasons, even though they 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 understood it, they they were, you know, um, amenable to the concept in certain ways, but it was, I, no, no town planning and zoning commission in Connecticut would have ever approved it. But that wasn't the point. The point was is to get it on, get a disapproval. It and the and the development was associated with was a realm. But get a disapproval and away we go to, you know, kind of like maybe what the Chef and O'Neal's situation was or the Mount Laurel situation in New Jersey. And get the state of Connecticut saying you can't zone this way. I don't know where that's going, but I think that was the whole intent of it, so. We'll we'll find that that, if it's like Chef versus O'Neal, it's, you know, be in the courts for next couple decades, so. We may not have to worry that for a while. But that's one thing, yeah, so, you know, there's and there's, but there was a change this year that about towns, about the uh, you know, basic accessory units. I don't know if you've dealt with that yet.
Yes, those, that portion of the rights was amended in November of last year to be a a little bit more permissible.
Okay, well, we'll have to check because the state.
There's things that have changed. I think.
Yeah, so we have to double check that.
I talked to you about, yeah, I'll talk to you about this, I think South Jersey is probably gonna opt out of the new legislation.
Well. I think you have a time period on it, yeah.
We do, until October twenty twenty-three, I think.
Well, I don't remember the time period, but it is, and then maybe when your plan is done, your affordable housing plan, then you kinda take that and do what you feel like you need to do with it. So there's a, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts going on.
And then it's into legislation.
But I'd like to, you know, help you along with it and uh see where we go.
So what's the process now?
Um, I think you need to discuss it with the commission. I don't, I know this is a bad time, you're calling a special meeting or what are we, January?
I think January.
Okay.
What, two weeks, what?
That is true.
Four weeks.
I, yeah, okay, that's fair.
From from my, me, from my, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I'm sorry, but. Prefer not to do another meeting as well. So I think that'd be what it would be, um, discuss it with the commission. And then we'll have Brian come back once the decision is made. Um, if that's not.
I suppose we'll exit.
Well, well, if once the decision is made, what's the purpose with Brian coming back? Other than he should be coming back to sign the contract?
That could be necessary, you know?
Yeah, we could, I don't have to.
I mean, that's what I mean.
I don't know, do you think it's important for the other commissioners to meet?
Yes, well, that's, well.
I don't, I think I can look, I can, I don't think that would be necessary. That's true, that's true.
Well, they they might have some questions though, Brian, that, you know, obviously we didn't ask.
Right.
Of course, I'm sorry, I don't.
But that may not be, I mean, most of the commissioners kind of trust your judgment?
I, well, my judgment.
You were, come on, you're good at this, Gary.
Uh. I I think they they probably do.
We could even perhaps take advantage of uh Zoom if you want me to participate. Uh, that's certainly a whole lot easier to fit into my schedule if you'd like to do a Zoom. I want, I wanted to come and see people face to face because this is the first meeting I've been at in two years in person.
Is it really? This, this is?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, to.
Wow.
It's it's really hit or miss out there.
Well, we y- you know, with Zoom, once it's there, it it's never gonna leave. Well, I know you might not like it.
I think it's personal, uh.
But well, I do too, but some commissions, there was one commission that I only had a very small part in my presentation. And actually, from a presentation standpoint, Zoom is sometimes easier because people, people, commissioners are sitting with laptops in front of them. You could show them a whole bunch of things, you don't have, you come in with a board that nobody could read or look at anyway.
Sure.
Yeah, so there's there's all sorts of things we're dealing with now. Again, things have changed a lot, so. But either way, I'd be happy to, you know, if you wanna see me again, I'd certainly like to get started, but if you wanna, you know, invite me over again on a, you know, it's fine too, so.
Can we discuss it and get back to you?
I'd be, I was, I think that's the best way to do it.
I think most can.
I'm not going anywhere this for the next two weeks, so I'm around, um.
Can we, can we talk to you about this tomorrow?
I could leave and you could talk about it now if you want.
No, can't. So let's talk about, see how we can expedite this or switch things up. And how Brian, you're anxious.
Well, I'm always anxious to start a, oh, because there's there's so many pla- and 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 one of the things I like to do is the polite nagging when I'm working with a town, because the town's always got a whole bunch of other things they're doing. And so I kind of like to kind of push what I'm doing, 'cause that's the way it gets done. Uh, I kinda learned that the harder way too, so.
Alright, um, we'll discuss it tomorrow and decide on what the next step, but we'll be taking another step somewhere.
Okay. Well, I certainly look forward to working with all you.
It was great to be out in New York.
Yeah, it was, you know, it's my pleasure. At le- well, at least it wasn't snowing or anything, yeah.
That was very fun. True, that's true.
But um, it, yeah, it it's, it is weird because I've I've come to know so many people and not meet them
Yeah.
over the past two years, and it's a little, it's odd, it's 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 odd.
It is odd.
But I'm glad I got to meet all of you and you too, so, um.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, thank you, Brian, for coming.
That's true.
And Merry Christmas, Happy New Years, happy holidays to everybody. I'll talk to you.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, you, yeah, okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we wind up. We have to get the rest of the mission to. Is there another candidate or is this just the only candidate we have?
There are other candidates, but based on the town's bidding policy.
Yeah.
It you have to go with the lowest qualified bidder.
Right.
And, yeah, and the next step up.
Well, well, lowest qualifying, who determines qualifying?
I think this one is happening.
Yeah, I think that this interview, Ty gathered up thoroughly with his.
Okay, but. But that doesn't mean uh his qual- qualifications versus the next low bidder's qualifications may be better.
Next low bidder.
And the better may be worth the more expense. I know that's not the way they work in the town.
I don't think that we can, when you're talking.
See, what what was the qualifying to?
It's it's quite a jump, um, it's like a fifty dozen dollar jump up.
And I don't know that that money was that large for, so, and and to be honest, those are the
Large.
That's pretty.
Yeah, it's not.
the the people who bid on those were those large companies that are in Connecticut, they're not people who are familiar with
That is.
local, so I don't know that you'd actually be getting more than a boilerplate kind of project handed to you. Um, I don't know, I don't know.
I know, that's, yes, but.
But there was one other bidder that I thought was, I I I personally liked a lot because I've worked with him, but the way he bid came in and had to get thrown out.
It was a, yeah, it was a completely, it was a completely.
Okay. That's just that, that's all. I I don't wanna say we're not stuck with him.
Well, you.
I I I think he he can work with us, I mean, he's he's a he's a one man show, which may be, we may get more of a personal attention with the bigger company.
I think it would, would, I have emailed, I have emailed him back immediately. I think he's, like he said, I think he's only using his labor and charity to pick the projects he wants to do. I mean, the other options, but go back out to the, we had more budget at the time, I mean, so if you want to play a year or two, budget more money, I think that would be, the problem with that is this new legislation needs to be addressed sooner.
We gotta get, gotta get going on this stuff to to waste any more time.
Yeah, I agree.
And it's and 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 overall, it means it as well, so it's not.
Yeah, I'd run into a lot of, there's a lot of problems service there.
A lot of gray areas, a lot of loopholes, it's like the if you wanna be thorough and enforcing and make sure that legally it's sound what you're saying, then you're running into trouble and savvy people challenge that right in the get go.
Okay. Alright, so, um. Do we need to have Brian come back to the other commission members or can we just discuss with the other commission members, because your time is in the.
I feel like you could probably
Yeah. All due to the court time.
And it can, it's on the string.
I mean, they'd they'd have you up to asking questions, but.
What kind of, um.
That's right, that's making us get.
Oh, that's what I was gonna say. That's what I was gonna say, yeah, they can open these emails, they can open these emails, they can, you can filter the emails, the questions.
Yeah. Maybe we should do that, let's let's right now, like tomorrow, send an email out to everybody saying, please review.
Don't you hear that?
If you have any questions, please email.
No.
And everybody got the proposal, so, yeah, between that and.
Time. Yeah.
We should offer, if they want paper copies, um, to get already.
I did not because they're also very cumbersome, they don't have that many of them, but um, through, they can borrow them, yes.
They can. Just. I think we can, we want.
Digital.
You need to.
Made my own.
You, you have one.
Made it today.
You made it.
Oh, you made it?
Copy your work.
I thought you had one, sorry.
Oh, that's all right.
You didn't have.
We did, but we have two extras, but it's a hard copy of this proposal.
Um, see. Oh. No.
It was.
I have to look at our copies, I can't, I can't do it yet, sure.
I do too, I can't do the. I can't do digital.
I have no problem with sending PDFs and stuff, but I'll make them copies, in my sense, it's spent a lot of the copies. But, uh, yeah, if we can get something out of the the rest of the crew tomorrow and ask them to review and please submit any questions you may have and, you know, review what was discussed tonight.
I.
And be prepared to discuss and make a decision next meeting.
I also think we should provide them so I may be incorrectly assuming I've shown Brian, I I re-formatted these myself, the ones that the other, that just about everybody has, it's in two columns. The type is much smaller and it's just hard to read. Maybe just for ease of editing purposes, should we get them a copy to to edit on? To agree, sure, what do you think?
If if you print offline, is there?
No, it doesn't, that was a horrible, it was terrible.
And and the the new regulations aren't integrated into.
Yes, the A D U stuff is not integrated in there yet.
So all the, all the stuff that you've recently added is not entering outside of the regulations, 'cause it's really quite.
Little re- yeah, what's.
Does the general public know that that what's online is unofficial?
It's, is it there, but it's.
It's there, but it's not where it ought to be.
It's not, yeah. It should be in the government, it's a work in progress area, I know.
Yeah, I know, I know, I think this is what the whole purpose of hiring Brian, or.
Yeah, we're working on it. Yeah, yeah, that would add to the task.
To to make this easier for us, the public and the policeman, policewoman, I guess.
Yes.
So.
So we'll make some copies of regs that they can write all over markup.
Alright. Again, from what time of year to start this, but we gotta.
Yeah. I think it's gonna be fun, I mean, it's gonna be a fun project, I mean.
Alright.
Um.
I don't think we can really do with this.
Discuss ring, we can't do anything.
No.
No, I mean, we could tell you what I found were on on the zoning map, if that matters to you.
We can't, we can't, we can't even prove anything. What's the revised?
Yeah, it's not revi- I mean, I think it it's a matter of, this is the zoning map without any color. I think that it traditionally was always black and white historically, is that what I understood? So if the commission or somebody determined that it should
That's my understanding.
remain that way, it's very difficult to follow and read.
True, maybe.
Um, so, I agree, but I think that like there was a historical kind of, why are you colorblind?
Colours, but. As long as it's colors, I.
No.
I got a problem, I got the problem with colors.
Okay. But Gary, so like.
If you wanna.
Not red, green, sir.
Not red, you got.
I know the colorblind people, yes. Right. But, um, like if you look on G I S, it's all very clear and, you know, it's something more similar to that. Then also, um, the old map, some of your new approvals have not been integrated, you've approved them. It's not like we're creating zones or anything like that, it just needs to be put on the map.
Right.
And as I understand it, the commission just needs to approve that update, so maybe next week.
Next year.
Thank you.
So we really can't do anything.
Mm, I think I mentioned to you that signs are a lot, uh, crazy, like that whole.
But all we. Okay, so I guess we're, we're done. I'm gonna have it in there.
It's not really, right?
Paper?
What is it?
Not doing anything.
I'm gonna pick on that.
Yeah, I think
You still have to call it, though, right?
Mm.
You have to motion to adjourn, yeah.
Oh, yeah, alright.
Not always
Don't hear a motion to adjourn. I guess I'll psych him. All was a favor. Alright. Thanks, Gary.
You good with it, or are you, uh
Well, some of the stuff is
Yeah, all different
Good holidays, everybody.